I'd like to call to order this special formal meeting of the Iowa City City Council for November the 4th, 2019. Roll call, please.
Cole.
Here.
Mims.
Here.
Salee.
Yeah.
Taylor.
Here.
Teague.
Here.
Thomas.
Here.
Throgmorton.
Here. Item two, Student Leadership Awards. We have two outstanding students who will be receiving awards tonight. They both attend Weaver Elementary, and one is Lydia Evans, and the other is Rio Matar. So would you all come up? Perfect. Thanks. Okay. What a great evening it is, and it's really a treat to be able to celebrate to outstanding students for doing really good work at Irving Weber School. And we talked about this beforehand, right? So I'm going to ask you, Lydia, to begin by reading your speech, and then...
Real.
Rio.
Rio. I'm sorry. Yeah. Thank you. And then you'll read yours, right? Okay. Good deal. So you want to begin?
Sure.
Speak to your parents and the audience out there.
Yeah, thank you. I would like to start this off by saying thank you to the City Council for giving me this award, and to my teachers and principal at Weber Elementary for selecting me. There are a lot of other people that show good leadership at Weber, so I'm really honored that I was chosen. Some ways that I try to show good leadership is leading by example. I always try to be a good role model even when I'm not in a school setting, and even when no one is watching. At school, I pay attention in class and ask questions during the lesson. I always try to be kind and make everyone feel welcome. I try to be friendly to new kids, and when we're doing a group project, I make sure that everyone listens to other people's ideas. Thank you.
All right. Well done. Okay, Rio.
Hello. My name is Rio, and I am very honored to be here. I would like to thank Mrs. Bass and my parents for their support. I think I won this award for several reasons. First, I try as hard as I can, and if I don't get it, I try so very hard to understand. Second, most of the time I take things a step higher and challenge myself. Third, I listen to instructions right away. And lastly, I try to put a good example for kids older than me, younger than me, and kids my age. Thank you.
Listen to instructions. What a good idea. Okay, so, like I said, I'm going to read the award for you both. So it reads the same, exactly the same for each of the awards, except for names. Yeah, okay. So Student Leadership Award. For your outstanding qualities of leadership within Weber Elementary, as well as the community, and for your sense of responsibility and helpfulness to others, we recognize Lydia Evans and Rio Matar as an outstanding student leader. Your community is proud of you. Presented by the Iowa City City Council, November 2019. So Lydia, here's yours.
Thank you.
And Rio, here's yours. Well done. And I know there's some really proud parents right down there, and some other really proud parents right over here. So great job. You all are doing really wonderful. So join me in celebrating. Bravo. To go off topic for just a second, there was something I meant to do, because I usually start every meeting by saying something about the day. And I guess what comes to mind is that a little over a week ago, I was in Greenville, South Carolina. And then I came back here and saw these beautiful trees with all sorts of yellow leaves and red leaves, and it was really fun to just observe our fall day. And a day later, there was this heavy snowfall, or snowfall anyhow, and all the yellow leaves came straight down, and all the red leaves came straight down. Next thing you knew, there were pretty much no leaves on the trees anymore. Oh, well. Next time I go to Greenville, South Carolina, I won't make that mistake. I'll come back just a little bit earlier or something. Okay, moving on, though. Two proclamations. So we have one proclamation for this evening. It's National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week. So, whereas hunger and homelessness remain one of our nation's most pressing domestic issues, and whereas this proclamation is an endeavor to educate and promote awareness about issues surrounding hunger and homelessness, and to inspire action and advocacy on behalf of people with food insecurities and who lack a permanent home, and whereas the plight of hunger and homelessness is an issue faced daily by hundreds of men, women, and children throughout our own community, and whereas food insecurity and hunger stem from poverty and a lack of reliable income sources, and whereas homelessness is the result of a complex set of circumstances that push people into poverty and force impossible choices between food, shelter, and other basic needs, and whereas many local organizations, including members of the local homeless coordinating board, are committed to sheltering and providing supportive services, as well as meals and food supplies to people in need, and whereas there has been steady progress to end hunger and homelessness through the collaborative efforts of our community, and we continue to work toward developing resources and capacity to meet the needs of people who are homeless and hungry, and thereby offer them hope, opportunity, and dignity. Now, therefore, I, James A. Throgmorton, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim November the 16th through the 24th to be National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week in Iowa City, Iowa, and urge all citizens to join in recognizing the important roles we each can play in making a difference in the lives of men, women, and children who experience hunger and homelessness in our community. I understand that Jim Kringle is here to accept this proclamation. Jim? Yeah, please come up. Please feel free to say something to us if you want.
Sure. I'll say a few words.
Okay.
So...
Go down.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I'm one of quite a few members of the local homeless coordinating board here in Iowa City. I participate in my role as the managing attorney at Iowa Legal Aid, but there's a couple of dozen agencies that provide services and come together to collaborate to address those issues. Just over the past year, the homeless coordinating board has worked on its annual winter emergency shelter, which provides shelter during the coldest months to people who would otherwise be literally homeless on the streets and in danger. And there's been no loss of life due to exposure in the past year. The board has also engaged in a case study to identify how to provide services to chronically homeless individuals, and that resulted in the very successful and amazing Cross Park Place, which opened earlier this year, and provides a permanent home for 24 single adults who had been chronically homeless but are not any longer. We've also developed a RentWise, a training program for tenants, to help them learn how to be good tenants that will help them become less likely to be homeless in the future. And we're hard at work in creating a risk mitigation fund to induce landlords to rent to difficult-to-house-or-rent tenants, and provide them with compensation in the hopefully unlikely event that they suffer losses as a result of their willingness to provide housing to those individuals. We've also developed Coordinated Entry, which is a pretty complex program. I won't try to summarize here, as well as Community Connections Day, which will be Thursday, November 21, at the Robert A. Lee Recreation Center, which is an annual service fair for residents at risk of homelessness or currently homeless. It provides haircuts, other clinics, as well as agencies there that provide a variety of services to help them know that this community is there to help support them. So thank you for the proclamation on behalf of the local homeless coordinating board.
Thank you, Jim. Okay, we can move on to our consent calendar, which is items four through nine. Could I have a motion to approve the consent calendar as amended?
Move.
Second.
Moved by Slay, seconded by Cole. Discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Cole.
Yes.
Mims.
Yes.
Salee.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Throgmorton.
Yes. Motion carries seven to zero. Could I have a motion to accept correspondence for item 8C from Cheryl Cruz?
Move.
Second.
Moved by Salee, seconded by Teague. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We come to item number 10, which is Community Comment. Anybody who would like to address any topic that is not on our formal meeting agenda could please feel free to come up and speak to us. Please don't take more than three or four minutes to express your views, and we'll move on from there.
Good evening, Mayor, councilors. My name is Andrea Cohen, and I am the former executive director of Iowa United Nations Association. I'm a great fan of Edward R. Morrow, and he said, "I want to say exactly what I mean to say," and I request your permission to read from the script. Children have human rights, and they should be empowered to claim them. Thirty years ago, the Convention on the Rights of the Child recognized children as their own beings entitled to non-negotiable rights. Nearly all governments, to the exclusion of one, have ratified the convention and pledged to respect, protect, and promote those rights. This makes the convention one of the most visionary and universally accepted human rights agreements in history. This anniversary creates a momentum for the international community to step up its efforts to make children thrive and to renew their commitment to protect and promote all their human rights. The Committee on the Rights of the Child, the body in charge of monitoring state's compliance with the provisions of the convention, has been encouraging state's parties to renew their commitment to the convention by pledging to take one specific and measurable action for promotion, protection, and realization of the rights of the child. The United States signed the convention but has not ratified it, and is the only country in the world that has not done so. There is opportunity, however, for states, cities, communities, and individuals to make such a pledge. Iowa United Nations Association is asking the Iowa City City Council to make its pledge to take one specific and measurable action as we celebrate the CRC at 30. So what I have for you is what exactly the pledge would look like, what it is, why you want to do it, how you want to do it, when you want to do it, and who will be doing it. I've also provided some action suggestions, in case you need them, though I'm pretty sure you've got plenty, and just in case you haven't learned it by heart yet, the Convention on the Rights of the Child, with illustrations and with what each of them are. So thank you very much, and it's not something that has to be done by the end of the year. It's not something that has to be done in a major program. It's just something that shows the commitment of Iowa City, which has pledged to support the convention against all, to eliminate all discrimination against women, which we're very thankful for, but now we can also do this Convention on the Rights of the Child. The 30th anniversary is actually on November 20th. That can be the starting point for something. It's something that can take three years, five years, however you would like to do it. If you need my help, I'm here until December 22nd. After that, I'm sure Iowa UNA will be happy to help, as well as the Johnson County chapter. So just let me know who I give this to. That was taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea. It's good to see you again, too. So surely some way we can get it on our next meeting's agenda, maybe in an information packet or something like that? Great. Hi.
Hi there, you guys. I'm Tashalen Harrington from Shelter House, and I want to first thank local homeless coordinating board for accepting the proclamation for National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week, as well as you guys for making the week for the proclamation. I also want to share some of the programs and activities and events that we will be To begin with, we will have a discussion panel, and it'll have an interesting mix of housing and healthcare professionals, talking about the importance of prescribing housing for healthcare. We'll have professionals from the community, as well as Senator Zach Walsh moderating the discussion. On November 21st, we will have a soup luncheon that is hosted by Gloria Day at the Congregational Church in Iowa City, and also a food drive, I mean, a sock drive, I'm sorry. And on that Friday, we will have a film screening, Lost in America, and it details the epidemic of youth experiencing homelessness, which is a pressing issue that is sometimes overlooked. We have a full week of programming, and more information can be found on our website at ShelterHouseIowa.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Tashonda. Hi, Jamie.
Hi. My name is James McCoy, and first of all, I just wanted to thank the council for their expressed support for the Energy Innovation and Carbon Dividends Act, and for the many things that are being done at local level through the council that are all extremely important. I just wanted to make one technical point that maybe wasn't clear in the previous information I gave you, and that is this proclamation or resolution is a very important thing. The intent of that is to go to all of our federal legislators and just let them know that there is political will at the local level for doing something about climate change. Another very important thing, though, is to actually go to the endorse the bill website and sign on as an endorser. That's what puts Iowa City Council on a list of illustrious groups, including LA County and South Miami, Florida, and Anchorage, Alaska, and many in between that have endorsed the bill. And so I'm hoping that in addition to a resolution, that the council will be willing to go on this website and just basically fill out about 10 lines indicating that they support the bill. Thanks very much for your support.
Thanks, Jeremy.
Good evening. My name is Becky Reedus. I am the executive director of Community Crisis Services and Food Bank. I'm also the agency chair of the inaugural year of the Agency Impact Coalition, group of agencies that have been known by as the legacy agencies, as they're funded through Iowa City for funding for our nonprofit organizations for a variety of needs. I want to address the process of funding nonprofit organizations tonight, and the process of funding outside, going outside the process to provide funds to organizations, such as being considered. Not against any organization, such as Houses into Homes getting funds, not at all. But I really feel strongly that it is important for the council to adhere to the same kinds of rules that they give all organizations for funding, that we have a process for joint funding, and we have deadlines, and we compete in a process for one pot of money that's divided among 15 or 16 organizations. I've written 12 of those applications, and 11 of them, I've never, our organization has not ever received full funding for that. It's a process, joint funding is, we're notified in the fall. We have about six weeks for which to write a proposal and submit it, and it's clearly been identified that if we don't meet that deadline, we're not going to be eligible to be considered for funding. I think this process, one in which we are applying for a specific amount of money, creates a competition. We all know that competition, and going around that process undermines equity for us all. Most of us know that we're not going to receive full funding in that process, that we're going to receive partial funding, and I think the transparency of what, and the competition is undermined when an agency goes around that process. And I'm questioning, I guess, why this process isn't, the rules, I guess, aren't for all. I know that there are agencies in the Agency Impact Coalition, of which are legacy agencies with Iowa City, who are in need of additional funding, who have never received full funding, except for last year, which was an unusual year. But going forward, we're not expecting that same level of funding. And I know that those agencies could use additional funds at the same time. So I guess that's my question, is why some agencies are required to adhere to the rules and others are not? Where that fairness and equity is coming from? All of the agencies that are asking for money have addressed serious issues in our community, whether it's housing, whether it's medical care, whether it's food, youth activities, counseling activities. I think it's important for the council to provide everyone with the same rules. Thank you.
Thank you, Becky. Hi there.
Hello. My name is Phil Priville. As the outgoing BioSalads applicator, I wanted to afford myself the chance to thank you all for the chance to have worked for the city for many, many years. My business has certainly benefited and enjoyed the opportunity to aid in labor management and evening of our workflow and continued employment of the people who I employ. Additionally, the farm ground that we operate has benefited from the BioSalads product, and I know BioSalads are the sort of things we like to bring up always in mixed company or near dinner, for sure. So back in 2010, so in addition to thanking you and bringing myself up here, I wanted to return something to you all. Back in 2010, when I was fairly new in the process and needed money much more, and the city was under different management, and certainly the wastewater plant was under different management as well, they had some issues with accounting. And so it was fairly common that I would get presented with money that wasn't earned, which is always a bit of a dilemma. And on one particular occasion, I had been presented a check three different times, same amount every time, and I would march the check back and return it. And after it came the third time, not that I needed to, but I decided that I would keep it, and I put it above my desk, and it was good conversation as to why it is that I was in possession of an uncashed check for $2,000 from the city of Iowa City, living out in the country. And so I'd like to return that to you all now, if, because...
No, no!
Well, odds are, Jim, it's fairly void, and it would be hard to present today, anyway. But I'll leave it with you all. And once again, thank you for what was a good process. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Phil. I was only joking.
Chris, you'll find a way to cancel it.
Sure.
A lot of money.
Good evening. My name is Chrissy Canganelli. I'm executive director of Shelter House, and I would just reiterate the comments of my colleague Becky Reedus from Community regarding the aid to agencies and the joint funding allocation process, and also on the heels of Jim's statement on behalf of the local homeless coordinating board. And the work that the local homeless coordinating board has done in the past, more than five years collectively, to coordinate services, to look at gaps in our community in services, and to work collectively and as a coalition to address those efficiently and effectively, to challenge ourselves to see if a gap existed. Did an entity exist that could address that need without creating an additional organization, an additional nonprofit, and the additional administrative and overhead expenditures that, without doubt, comes with that establishment of a new organization? And I'd like to say that we've done, or will say, we have done a phenomenal job in doing that, in integrating new programming innovations, working within the existing system of care, and we're stronger and more effective for it, and we have helped in very profound ways some of the hardest-to-serve, hardest-to-house individuals and most vulnerable individuals and families in our community because of it. And we have done that all along with the support and the leadership of city staff and with this council. So I have to say, I was quite shocked at the conversation and the starting point for the conversation with respect to the determination that the right thing to do at this moment would be to give $25,000 to a relatively new organization, because the gap in between increasing service and making an impact was funding for an executive director. I say this at risk of sounding ungrateful, I suppose, but I've had over 20 years of modeling this value system, these goals, these objectives, working in collaboration with the existing entities to build and strengthen the network that exists within our community, and to do that with an eye to efficiency and effectiveness and economy. I'm going to also add that no one up here asked the question, "Are they collaborating? Did anybody reach out to help?" On multiple occasions, I will say that my organization offered administrative support, a vista volunteer, resources, guidance, and at every turn, we were turned away, denied. Your decision tonight and the conversation is such a slap in what I have understood to be the values and the strongholds that our community has endorsed in moving forward and developing a system of care. And I would echo the statements that Susan Mims, Councilor Mims, made as far as standing back and looking at the need to do some real hard human services planning, and reassess, and think outside the box. Challenge us to do that. We are the experts in this area, and we were not consulted as to a possible strategy to achieve, I would say, an even greater goal than what will happen from your decision tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Chrissy.
My name is David Dixon, and I think you've seen me enough, you can probably guess what I'm about to talk about. Earlier tonight in the work session, you talked about speed limit on North Dubuque Street. I wanted to make a couple of comments about that. As Ms. Dillings mentioned, the non-statutory speed limit has to be passed by ordinance. Dubuque Street was previously 45 by default, when Mayflower opened back in the '60s. It was reduced from 45 to 35 once the city got authority to do so from the state in 1968, and first adopted by ordinance in 1977. There's been minimal new construction since then. You guys have improved the road quite a bit since then. Couple of recent cases making national news in Michigan and in Louisville, Kentucky, where courts have thrown out traffic stops relating to speeding. One of them in Louisville, guy stopped for 93 in a 55. It simply does not matter that speed limit signs could be or should be enough, it's a matter of what the law is. And in tossing evidence of drunk driving, there is no public record of any engineering study modifying the statutorily defined speed limits. The speed limit within the Gateway Project has never been 25. An ordinance to that effect was never adopted. At the August meeting, instructed staff to conduct a study. They haven't quite done that yet. There are certain things that are required to be in that study. One of them is very important, and that's an analysis of the free-flowing speeds of vehicles on that roadway. They counted all the... They counted all the cars. If you drive Dubuque Street, you know that you have, you know, Mr. Thomas, rigidly at 25, and perhaps Ms. Memms trying to get by him, right behind him. I'm not accusing anybody of anything, but, but that's something that's required to be in there, and there's a reason for that. One of the things an engineer looks to is, what percentage of traffic is free-flowing? Do we have lots of platooning? What are following distances looking like? Can we improve some of those things with a faster speed, which I think is one of your concerns? Could 35 miles an hour, in fact, be safer than 25? Could 45 be safer than 35? And that's something that we need to see in that study at a minimum. Fortunately, Mr. Ralston collected the data necessary to determine all of that. He's got the raw data. I had a conversation with him earlier today, and he's agreed to provide that to me. And I'm going to crunch this stuff in Excel and figure out what some of those parameters look like, what the 85th percentile speed of free-flowing vehicles actually looks like. It's higher than 41 and a half. By how much, I don't know. It could be 42, it could be 49. We do know we've had people looking at police records stop for more than 30 over on that stretch. That's 65. One of my concerns, though, is that the police enforcement that has happened, we're talking 300 citations just in that stretch, out of roughly 1,000 issued in the city, citywide, 300 of those, and about 40% of them, 39 point something, if I remember right, are for speeds less than 10 miles an hour over, less than 35. We're spending a lot of enforcement effort enforcing speed limits on people who are doing something that design engineers on the Gateway Project have said is perfectly safe. That's something we need to think about. You know, I've, I've attempted for three months now, trying to find evidence of engineering support for some of the city's other speed limits, and have come up with nothing. Maybe the city's never done them, maybe they've been lost to history, I don't know. But I want to know when the city's going to start issuing refunds to those people that should have never been cited. How many of them are, are struggling for furniture in their home, or trying to find, you know, trying to maintain housing? How many of them are fighting a license suspension that might result in a loss of a job? All those things, even somebody that's cited for 45 in a 25, that would have still been speeding potentially, or somebody that can have 65 in a 25, there's a difference in what they paid to the court and what consequences they face as a result of the errors on the part of the city in trying to enforce a speed limit that never passed. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Miriam?
My name is Miriam Makasha. I currently live in North Liberty. I lived in Iowa City for over 20 years before I moved there. I'll get back to that in a minute. First thing I want to do is thank you all for your, to council and staff, for your concerted efforts to review and upgrade your climate solutions and goals. I'm really pleased to see everything that's going on, their new commission that you're setting up. It's very exciting, and thank you. Second thing is, I'm walking billboard for what Jamie was talking about. If you can't see it, it says, "Keep calm and put a price on climate." I think I just got the shirt today. Anyway, so I'll, I'll ditto what Jamie said. I hope you will do the endorsement, not just a resolution, for this community supporting House Number 763, the Energy Innovation and Carbon Dividend Bill. And thirdly, I've been thinking about, I'd really like to move back to Iowa City. I love it here. I live in North Liberty. Why do I live in North Liberty? Because I couldn't afford to live in Iowa City. And one of the reasons I couldn't afford to live in Iowa City is because we don't have enough affordable housing, and I know you work on that. But one of the things that's come to my attention is that there are restrictions on multiple housing in many, many neighborhoods in Iowa City. I live in a condo, a six-unit condo. I'm on the third floor. Heat rises. I practically pay no heating. You save a lot of energy when people live closer together. And since you're interested in saving energy in this community, I really encourage you to think about changing some of the zoning that permits more concentrated housing. It saves money, it provides more affordable housing, and it saves energy. So, thank you for your work. That's it.
Thank you, Miriam. Not seeing anyone else. We could move ahead, but I want to ask Kelly a question. Did I forget to get a motion to accept correspondence from Cheryl Cruz, or did we do that?
You did.
Thank you. Okay, item 11, Planning and Zoning Matters. Item 11A, Regulating Plan Amendment for 625 South Gilbert Street. This is an ordinance amending the riverfront crossings regulating plan to include the property located at 625 South Gilbert Street in the Central Crossing Sub District, and this is pass and adopt. Could I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Memms and seconded by Teague. Discussion. I'll just quickly note, we've already discussed this in two previous meetings, so odds are pretty good there won't be extensive discussion tonight, but we'll see. Any comment from anybody? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Memms?
Yes.
Salee?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
No.
Cole?
Yes.
Motion carries six to one. Throgmorton in the negative. Item 11B, Rezoning at 305 and 315 East Prentice Street and 625 South Gilbert Street. This is an ordinance conditionally rezoning approximately 1.6 acres of land located at 305 and 315 East Prentice Street and 625 South Gilbert Street, from intensive commercial CI-1 and community commercial CC to, to riverfront crossings, central crossings, RFC hyphen CX. And this is second consideration, but the applicant has requested expedited action and waiving second consideration.
I move that the rule requiring the ordinances must be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed be suspended, that the second consideration and vote be waived, that the ordinance be voted on for final passage at this time. Second.
Moved by Memms, seconded by Salee. Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Salee?
Yes.
Taylor?
No.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Memms?
Yes.
Salee?
Yes.
Motion carries six to one. Taylor in the negative. Could I have a motion to pass it up?
Yeah. Move final adoption.
Second.
Second.
Moved by Memms and seconded by Thomas. Discussion. Again, we've had lengthy discussion about this topic in the past. From my point of view, the key question is not the rezoning, but the height bonuses.
Which will be subsequently decided.
Subsequent thing.
One footnote to our discussion about, that we had extensively the other week, about the carbon emission aspect to this, in terms of the height of building and optimizing, or should I say minimizing, carbon emissions. John and I have been in contact with Martha Norbeck and have some, have had some, at least on Martha's end, and John's end, of course, too, some very learned discussions on this precise topic. Martha's in the process of looking at some of the, the research that John has showed. I think she's going to at least give us her take, and at some point, maybe the council in, in the future may want to look at this question more in-depth, so we can, you know, as opposed to just sort of our gut instinct, that we can get some consensus in terms of where the scientific studies are, are telling us. So sort of stay tuned for that. I don't think we can figure that out tonight, but I think that will be an important part of our future discussions on height.
Just as a reminder, you, at your previous meeting, you asked the Climate Act, the Climate Commission to review that topic, so they'll also be...
There'll be some additional.
Right. Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Memms?
Yes.
Salee?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Could I have a motion to accept correspondence from Michael Welch, Axiom Consultants, and Pat Brown?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Memms, seconded by Salee. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Which gets us to item 12. Item 12, Burlington and Madison Intersection Improvements. This is a resolution approving project manual and estimate of costs for the construction of the Burlington and Madison Intersection Improvements Project. Establishing amount of bid security to accompany each bid, directing city clerk to post notice to bidders, and fixing time and place for receipt of bids. I'll open the public hearing. Hi, Jason.
Hello. Sorry, I'm having some trouble here.
Sorry.
Okay, perfect. All right, Mayor Throgmorton, council members. My name is Jason Reichert. I am Senior Civil Engineer in the City Engineering Division. Tonight, I have a presentation for you on the Burlington and Madison Intersection Improvements Project. So this project's been around in one form or another for quite a while, originally designed in part for the anticipation of increased pedestrian traffic to the new university rec center. It included landscape medians to direct pedestrians to signalize intersections to cross, as opposed to the, to deter mid-block crossing, and was designed by Anderson Bogart in 2010. The current project, we reevaluated the design and looked at the current conditions and determined that medians were no longer necessary as a more, as a form of safety improvements. The current design includes pavement widening from Madison Street to Front Street, and continuous buffered bike lanes from Madison Street to Riverside Drive. The project also includes signalized intersection improvements and ADA sidewalk improvements at the Burlington-Madison intersection, and some public utility improvements in the corridor as well. I didn't know how well these would show up, but this is an exhibit showing the proposed restriping of Burlington Street. This also extends up to Capitol Street, but the bike lanes do not. So it would just be from Madison to Riverside that the bike lanes would be added. The other item that I was asked to kind of touch on was the Madison Street four-lane to three-lane conversion was to be part of this project, but with the university's projects that are going on for the next couple of years, we decided to pull that back and wait until those are complete, to complete the conversion of Madison Street and add bike lanes to that corridor. With that, that's it.
Can you go back to the ones, I'm trying to understand the buffered bike lanes, for sure. It seems like we've got full lanes from curb to curb on the bridge, and so I'm just trying to be clear about...
Yeah, it's kind of hard to see, so there is...
Between the turn lane and...
Between the turn lane, yeah, between the turn lane. My mouse isn't showing up there. The through lane and the right-turn lane on the north side of the bridge is dedicated bike lane, and then on the south side of the bridge, what looks like, I guess, a shoulder line is actually, it's the...
So it's right up against the edge of the bridge?
Yep.
Okay. So I'm assuming that the lanes currently are wide enough that all we're doing is reducing the width of the current lanes?
Yeah, I believe, yeah, I believe so. There'd be 11-foot lanes.
Okay, thank you.
Normally, I love bike lanes, but this does seem a little bit dangerous in the sense of the bike lane is right between two lanes of vehicular traffic. Am I looking at that correctly? And it, isn't it true that these particular sidewalks are wide enough that it is okay for bikes to go on the sidewalks over the bridge, or is that not okay?
I don't believe so. I believe they're four or five foot wide.
Not with pedestrians.
What happens at, so where, where the bike lane meets Riverside Drive, what happens?
Well, there's the Iowa River Corridor Trail, and then future, long-term, we're working with the university to look at a kind of a Grand Avenue reconfiguration. That's a long-term project that we're currently working in the study phase on, so. These improvements were identified in the Bike Master Plan as a recommended route, so, because we're doing the, this project, that we were implementing it with that.
Jason, what will protect the bicyclists?
Paint.
Yeah. There's, are you, like, the width of the buffer, or?
No, frankly, I'm trying to wrap my head around being a bicyclist crossing that bridge. On a bike lane, it is between car lanes. That's what I'm trying to wrap my head around. And so as a bicyclist, my immediate instinct is, no, I'm not going to do that. I'm going to ride on the sidewalk. That's, that's what I'm telling myself at the moment. So, but set me, take me out of the picture for a second, and just think about other bicyclists. Have you all been in conversation with bicyclists who routinely use this bridge and have complained about it for many years about there not being a way to cross it, really, safely on a bicycle? Have you had conversations with them about this particular design?
Not to my recollection, recollection. I believe we may have in the past. We've been working on this for a while now.
So, when, with the original concepting of this project, we, we had a lot of discussion with the bicycle community, and, and they actually brought it to our attention, the need for the, for the bicycle lanes and the on-street bicycle facilities. And what, what they had come back to us with originally, when we were looking at the, the concept of having the median in the middle, there wasn't enough room to provide on-street bicycle facilities. So they were looking at having a, a bikeway outside of the street, and then especially at the crossing near where the water plant was, they were going to bring the bicycles back into the street. With the redesign that we've done, we're able to keep the bicycles that want to stay on, on the street and use the on-street bicycle facilities, a dedicated space in the lane, and they'll stay visible through that whole corridor, versus bringing them from outside the back of curb into the traveled way.
So they've seen this and approved it?
They have.
I agree with you, Jim. I wouldn't ride a bike there, personally. But it's, it's either, I guess it's either doing this, or it's having nothing at all, and they're riding in the same lanes with the vehicles, or they're on the sidewalk, which is too narrow for bicyclists and sidewalk, bicyclists and pedestrians together. So there's not, the, the infrastructure does not lend itself, itself to a good, safe design, in my opinion.
What's, what's the striping going to be like?
Do you know what the, what the buffer width is going to be?
I believe the, the buffer is only a foot, or a foot and a half.
You don't mean between the lines on each side of the bike lane?
Yeah, between the travel lane and the bike lane.
Can you tell me again why in the middle, why it's not on the side?
Why it's in the middle as opposed to, you're saying to the side of the bike lane?
It's because the, the travel lane, as you go up the hill. So, so in this situation, unlike on the, on the south bridge, there's no turn lane adjacent to there. So for the, for the bicycle movement to be able to go from Burlington Street across to Grand Avenue, they need to be between the turn lane and the through lane. So basically, they're on the right-hand side of that travel lane as you work your way up the hill. Otherwise, they would have to come back across the turning traffic to get, to be able to go up to Grand Avenue Hill.
And if you're going from the bridge to Grand, you also can, if you are in the middle biking, you will cross the street in the middle, and you will be there also in Grand in the middle, or after that, you have to...
You'll be, you'll be along, you'll be in the, in the right-hand travel lane of Grand Avenue. So you won't be in the middle of any lanes. It's two lanes, Grand Avenue is two-lane as you work your way up the hill. Eventually, that right-hand lane turns into the bus pickup lane in front of the residence halls. You won't, you're not in the middle of, you're not in between two lanes as you work your way across and work your way up the hill.
You mean like, you're coming from the bridge on the middle, but after that, you'll be in the right lane?
Right, so, so as, as I'm, as I'm...
Stay there.
Right, so, so if I'm, if I'm in the right-hand through lane of Burlington Street... Right, so if I'm in the right-hand through lane of Burlington Street, that takes you straight across the intersection up Grand Avenue.
Okay.
Right? So you will be on the right-hand side of that lane on your bike as you work your way into the lanes up Grand Avenue.
I don't know, for somehow I can't picture that. Because now this is the bike lane now, it is in between the two lane, right?
But cars on the right will turn.
The right, the right-hand, that right-hand lane is a turn only, so that right-hand lane is a right-turn lane onto Riverside Drive.
Yes.
So those cars are going to have to turn right. There's no receiving lane across the street for them, so you're going to be in that right-hand side of the travel lanes as you work your way up.
So I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Ron, I believe it's a similar situation to what we have on Melrose. As you're approaching Hawkins, you're going to be between, you currently are between a turn lane that goes right or north onto Hawkins and the bike lane, you know, so the bike lane closer to the parking ramp, you're going to be riding on the edge next to the curb. And then as that turn lane's created to go right onto Hawkins, that bike lane stays between them, and that's a pretty common striping approach. So we've had that on Melrose for a while.
I think there might have been a misunderstanding, or at least I hope there was. What's the actual width of the bike lane?
So the.
Five and a half.
Yeah, so the bike lane would be five and a half feet. The buffer itself is the 18 inches or the foot and a half. So that'd be on both sides.
Given the volume of traffic, particularly here, and sometimes maybe the speed of it, but particularly the volume, has there been any consideration, at least during the warm weather, when we're not worrying about snow removal, of putting up the, I don't know what you call them, the little red posts?
Is that possible?
That is not something that we've considered in regards to the bike lanes.
I just throw it out for some, maybe some thought, especially during the warm weather when we're not worried about plowing snow, especially in the first year or two to maybe kind of start help training people, because that's going to be a huge switch there. And then my other concern becomes those bicycles going straight are going to have to merge with that traffic, the vehicles going straight. And I realize that a lot of those vehicles tend to try and get in the left lane because they know that bus lane is there, and they know they've got to get over if they're going to continue around on Melrose. We're still going to have some issues there, I think, so.
I'm really worried about the, you know, with the interior lanes, if they decide, oh whoops, I guess I need to get into the turning lane, and I didn't move across the bike lane, and there'll be a bike there. I mean, is that, is that, I mean, presumably that's some sort of concern, isn't it? See what I'm saying? I mean, those lanes in the northern part of it that are on the south that are supposed to proceed straight through the intersection, correct? But what if they change their mind and decide they need to get into the right lane and don't see the bike in that bike lane?
I'll tell you, Rockneas, I've traveled in other cities. This is a very, very common.
I've seen it too, and there's been critique of these, so.
Yeah, and I've seen in the really big cities, it's super common. I think for us here, we just haven't really had any or many like this, and that's why I just kind of throw out that idea of putting those posts in for the first year.
You could color the lane.
Yeah, that's another thing that's done in a lot of places, is coloring it. So make it stand, make them, paint them green a lot of places.
Distinguish it from the vehicle.
Something like that would be helpful. I feel uncomfortable, as I think I articulated already. And it's partly because I was not able to read these maps clearly enough, and I didn't realize where the bike lanes were going to be until just tonight. So my gut instincts tell me I want to know what the bike community thinks about this particular design before I vote.
Well, it sounds like they've already supported it.
Well, I haven't seen anything in writing. I mean, I take your word for it, but I haven't seen anything from people saying, hey, yeah, I understand you have some concerns, Jim, but, or whoever the council members, but we think this is the best solution.
I mean, I guess for me, if our staff says those people were part of the process and support it, I'm not comfortable holding this up to get something in writing. I mean, I trust our staff if they stand there and tell us they've met with these people and these people support it.
Well, I don't want to make it a matter of trust, because I totally trust Ron and Jason and all that. Any other discussion?
Public comment?
Public comment?
Would it be possible to get feedback on that proposal for the white? Is that something you can at least consider? Is that not practical? Because that would certainly reduce my concerns, and I think Susan brings up a good point. These are in a lot of other communities, but I also think there's been a lot of pushback on these sorts of things because there is not that physical barrier. So I think your original point, I think, is well taken, so.
Yeah, we can report back.
Okay.
So we do have a public hearing, so David, please.
So, David Dixon, I'll admit that I haven't looked at this before tonight, so I'm kind of giving you a first, first off-the-cuff impression of it. As a cyclist, I'd be a little uncomfortable with that long of a lane in between two lanes of traffic, but it is what's required. You either have to terminate the bike lane, or it has to go to the left of an exclusive turn lane. So what Jason's doing here is strictly by the book. It's what he's required to do. However, I contemplate a little bit, an alternative where you could put the bike lane over to the right, but it would require an additional action. And that would be a requirement to cross the street using the pedestrian over, you know, the bridge overhead, instead of crossing on the surface level. You might have to pass an ordinance that required dismounting to go up the spiral ramp thing, but that would be one way that would allow you to put the bike lane over at the curb towards not conflicting with the right-turn traffic and maybe get a little bit of extra space and comfort out of that as well. Otherwise, it looks like an interesting project. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Does anybody want to address, anybody else want to address this topic? Okay, seeing no one else, I'm going to close the public hearing. Could I have a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by MEMs and seconded by Cole. Discussion?
I am going to support it. I think to Susan's point, it is progress, and it is a lane, and it has at least received feedback from some of the cyclists that routinely comment on this. And I know that the Burlington Street Bridge has been an elusive goal for a very long time, that this represents an effort by staff to try to meet this goal under a lot of constraints. So hopefully, at least they can report back to us, and it may turn out that the engineering standards won't allow these nice little white barriers that go up along there. Hopefully, it will be feasible in terms of the engineering studies, but I say let's move forward with it and at least make some progress on this Burlington Street Bridge issue that comes up for, has come up for several years.
I would agree.
I would support it too, but somebody said like, if it's being colored, different color would be great, so people can differentiate it from the, or it will be clear that the bike lane, so we are not discouraged while they are biking there.
I'm going to support it as well. And I would agree that if we can do something just for the first year or two, just to make sure that it's identified as a bike lane for safety, that would be good. The other thing is that if this doesn't, you know, God forbid anything horrible happens, but if it doesn't seem like in the future, you know, we can do better than, you know, potentially doing a overhead bridge would be an option. But I'll support it and go from there.
I'll support it, but I do think, if possible, having that conversation with the bike community would be helpful, just to get their confirmation on the details of the project, along the lines of what we were just discussing, perhaps. Enhancing it, distinguishing it through the use of paint, which could be issued as an addendum to the contract, so that it would be part of the contract without slowing up the project.
I'm supportive of it. Obviously, it's something that's been needed for some time, but I think, I agree with Susan, some sort of method of identifying it clearly as the bike lanes. I think there's some very innovative ways out there that some other cities have done. I think we received some info a while back about some glow-in-the-dark lanes, which was kind of innovative, but also in regards to paint, that wears out and has to be redone so often. So I think Susan's idea also about other types of markers would be important.
Yes, okay, so I'm going to support it as well, because I don't want to make this a matter of trust with our staff. I like the way Rockney phrased his suggestion. I agree with Maz about the color coding, the bike lane. I think both of those would be good moves, and then we have to pay attention to how it goes. If any bike people are watching or have become aware of this topic, I'd like to get feedback from them, but full speed ahead. Any further discussion?
No.
Hearing none, roll call, please.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throckmorton?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
MEMs?
Yes.
Salee?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Item 13 Airport Zoning. This is an ordinance amending Title 14, entitled Zoning Code, Chapter 6, entitled Airport Zoning, to update the airport zoning requirements based on the new airport layout plan, closing of the north-south runway, and changes in FAA regulations. This is second consideration, but staff has requested expedited action.
I move that rule requiring the ordinances must be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed be suspended, that the second consideration and vote be waived, and that the ordinance be voted on for final passage at this time.
Second.
Moved by MEMs, seconded by Taylor. Discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throckmorton?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
MEMs?
Yes.
Salee?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Move final consideration?
Second.
Moved by MEMs, seconded by Salee. Discussion? Thanks for your patience, Mike. Hearing no further discussion, roll call, please.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throckmorton?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
MEMs?
Yes.
Salee?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Item 14 Disorderly Conduct and Disorderly House. This is an ordinance amending Title 8, entitled Police Regulations, Chapter 5, entitled Miscellaneous Offenses, to amend the ordinance so that it complies with a recent federal court decision. This is second consideration, but again, staff has requested expedited action.
I move that the rule requiring the ordinances must be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed be suspended, that the second consideration and vote be waived, and that the ordinance be voted on for final passage at this time.
Second.
Moved by MEMs, seconded by Taylor. Discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Throckmorton?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
MEMs?
Yes.
Salee?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Move final consideration?
Second.
Moved by MEMs, seconded by Thomas. Discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Cole?
Yes.
MEMs?
Yes.
Salee?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries seven to zero. Item 14A Deer Management Firearms in Parks. This is an ordinance amending Title 10, entitled Public Ways and Property, Chapter 9, entitled Parks and Recreation Regulations, to allow persons to carry firearms in parks for the purpose of killing deer pursuant to a deer management plan. This is first consideration.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by MEMs and seconded by Salee. Discussion? Would anybody like to address this topic? Seeing no one, council discussion? I'll express a concern, just to get it out on the table. There's going to have to be ample public notice, because people walking through Hickory Hill Park don't want guns fired in their direction. And so I'm very clear that city staff is fully aware of that, and will do everything they can to make sure that people are adequately informed. And there are nearby houses as well, so a lot depends on where the guns are aimed and whether they're mis-aimed. So I think attention needs to be paid to that as well, and I'm sure staff has thought about that as well.
Well, and with that, Jim, I think it's really important, you know, that the public knows and understands that we're contracting, you know, with white buffalo who's done this all across the country.
Very experienced.
And very experienced, very professional, and they're extremely cautious about how they set up their sights and where they shoot, and have, they're incredibly disciplined about, you know, having to aim down, you know, so that there's no chance of bullets traveling long distances, certain distance from houses. So, I mean, I agree with your, that those are important issues, but I have extreme confidence that, in the history and performance of white buffalo, that those should really be non-issues.
I think a key difference, unless I'm mistaken about this, is that they have not done this kind of hunt inside Hickory Hill Park before.
Not inside Hickory Hill, but I think they have in other parks in other cities. So it's going to be new for us. I totally agree, and the notification is critically important, but I think the safety issue will be well taken care of.
I had those concerns too, but it was good to note that the Friends of Hickory Hill Park were consulted and don't object to the sharp shooting in the park.
Concerned about the damage to all the plants and stuff, too.
Any further discussion?
I wasn't know even the cutting, gun on the park is not allowed. And my question would be like, how do they know if, like, there's not even, somebody's searching people there, and usually people will, maybe people are cleaning, and we don't know. This is first time I know that is, again, it's a law to cut. I didn't have one anyway, but.
I'm not sure.
And even how?
Like, we don't know.
How do you know if people, they are not having it or not?
Know if somebody uses it, or somehow gets searched, or?
Yeah, because park is just open for everyone, and this is the resting.
I'm confident that there are some safety measures that are being placed to, you know, that white buffalo, they've done this before in a lot of cities. So I don't know all the details, but, and I feel confident that they are aware of those hazards and will do stuff to white buffalo.
Okay.
Who's doing the sharp shooting.
Any further discussion?
It's for regular people, right, to be?
I'm not hearing any. Roll call, please.
Cole?
Yes.
MEMs?
Yes.
Salee?
Salee?
Maz? Yes or no?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throckmorton?
Yes. Motion carries seven to zero. Item 15 Public Art Strategic Plan Adoption. This is a resolution adopting the Iowa City Public Arts Strategic Plan 2020 to 2025. Could I have a motion to approve, please?
Second.
Moved by Salee, seconded by MEMs. Hi, Marcia.
Hello.
Good evening.
And Barrow Rose Smith, hi.
Hi.
I'm losing my mark. There it is, sorry.
My name's Barrow Rose Smith. I'm the chairperson of the Public Art Advisory Committee, and I'm here today to run through the strategic plan that we've put together for the Iowa City Public Art, I guess, strategic plan moving forward. We've prepared this plan, it's taken us about almost a year with lots of input sessions, and to make sure that we are in complete agreement with the city's plan. So we'll go through this quickly, and colleagues on the committee are welcome to help me out, too. So firstly, I want to thank the council and Mayor Throckmorton for reviewing this plan, for inviting us to be here. I also want to thank all committee members who have served on the Public Art Advisory Committee, Wendy Brown, Andrea Truitt, Stephen Miller, Edward Boykin, and then our city liaisons, Ron Nocke and Julie Seidel Johnson, and of course, Marcia Bollinger for putting together this wonderful document for us to look at. So our summary overall, the thing to take away from this is that we have worked really hard, made lots of opportunities available for the public to give their input on what we're doing with public art in this community, and in a way that will help us better align with the goals and cultural mission of Iowa City and put us on par with other cities of our size and scale and mission. So these are our vision, mission, purpose. The main purpose of this plan is what I really want to highlight. Oh, is it not up there? I'm so sorry.
I'm not getting it to pull up.
Okay.
There we are.
Great, all right, here we go. So vision, mission, purpose. I'm going to just highlight the purpose for you this evening. This was created to outline a five-year plan to create a more sustainable and diverse public art program designed to meet the interests and the needs of our growing community and to secure the funding necessary to support it. We have a wonderful vibrant history of public art in our community. Our public art program was begun in 1997 and has experienced a lot of funding fluctuation over its history, which has made it difficult for long-term planning in terms of collecting new artworks and creating new opportunities for local artists, as well as for larger-scale commissions that might invite outside artists into our community. In terms of how this strategic plan interfaces with Iowa City's comprehensive plan, this was developed specifically to align with the goals and strategies for arts and culture. As we can see in our comprehensive plan, the IC 2030 Comprehensive Plan, which was adopted on May 14th of 2013. And this was our process. So starting in December of last year, there was a request from city council to draft this plan. Beginning in February, we held a meeting for arts professionals in our community and with the help of those professionals crafted a strategic process to gather input from a broader public, which we implemented on March 8th. We then had another meeting with our professionals. We had a survey that we developed that was available online and also in person. We had more meetings later in the year, so lots of meetings, lots of times to give this input. And we finally have the strategic plan ready now in October of this year. Some highlights of the surveys that we presented to the public, we had 545 respondents from all parts of Iowa City, which is a really, really good turnout in terms of feedback. And when people were able to make general comments, over 150 people chimed in. Many people wanted to see more public art outside of downtown and in the neighborhoods, and more engaging and interactive public art, and more art by local artists. These are our goals and strategies, and I'm going to invite my colleague on the committee, Steve, up here to go through these with us.
Hello. Thanks, Barrow. My name is Steve Miller. I'm the vice chair of the Public Art Advisory Committee. And so you, you all have the strategic plan, and we only have a short amount of time, so we're not going to go through every action step and task and timeline, but just to hit the highlights. Goal one is reviewing the existing public art program, which some of the highlights there include considering expanding the size of our committee to be more representative of the overall community, looking at what time we meet and where we meet, just to make sure we're inclusive and representing the full community, updating our procedures and criteria for accepting public art proposals, and also in the spirit of collaboration and goal four, initiating an annual gathering of arts professionals to encourage and optimize collaboration. Goal two is expanding opportunities, and this is about expanding both where the art is and trying to get it out into the neighborhoods more, but also expanding the concept of art and what, what types of art are, are public art. So getting diverse types of art and spontaneous arts experiences in non-traditional settings, that was one of the key, something that was brought up a lot in the survey is people want sort of to be surprised by, by art and where it is and what it is. Goal three is secure and manage funding. So we're not here to tell you where the funding's coming from. We're excited to work with city staff and council members to figure out a sustainable and reliable source that allows us to pursue these goals, and also to provide resources for the required maintenance and conservation of the art we do have. The fourth goal is collaborate with all the great arts organizations in our community and have public art advisory committee members and local artists more integrated with the city process, cultivating the partnerships with the community arts organizations, supporting efforts to create a community arts center, and promoting the incorporation of public art in private development. And goal five is building awareness and promoting understanding about public art and the benefits of arts in general, and specifically about increasing our committee's interaction with city council and staff to keep everyone updated, providing annual report and, and public awareness. So, how do I switch it here? So, in summary, public art is, is one of the things that makes Iowa City lovable, makes it memorable, and we, we feel like this plan has public support and is in line with the strategic plan, and we ask that you adopt it. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Barrow Rose. Would anybody else like to, well, I guess you're right there, so maybe we should see if anybody has questions for you. So anybody want to ask questions?
I guess, it's beautiful, man. Good, yeah, good job.
Would anybody else like to comment on the proposed public arts plan? Okay, well, then we can have a, a council discussion.
Thank you.
So I want to make a quick observation, and that is, first of all, I think you've done a superb job of putting this together, so thank you. And then I think public art is absolutely crucial in developing and enhancing and articulating a sense of place in a community, and likewise, a sense of community identity. And those are both crucial. And when I think about that, I think in a way similar to how I think about historic preservation, we have, if we dig deep in our history, we'll discover that the Iowai tribe used to live here, and the, the Muskwaki resided here, and so on. And if we look farther ahead, we can also see that there are lots of people here now who are not sort of traditional Iowa Cityans. So it seems to me, in a manner similar to historic preservation, we needed to expand our horizons and find some way to connect our public art to the people who used to live here for thousands of years, and the current residents who are different from the longtime current residents of this place, and who are at the same time helping to shape the future unfolding of our public art and our history. So I would hope that, and I think you all have this sense embedded in your own thinking, but I would hope you would do what you can to reach out to members of the Iowai tribe and the Muskwaki, but also to members of our newer communities in Iowa City to make sure that they are somehow involved in developing some of the newest art that comes to, public art that comes into our community.
Mayor Jim, may I speak to that quickly?
Sure.
Sure. So part of that, as it's embedded in the strategic plan, comes down to the accessibility of our committee and who can serve on our committee. And so some of the things that we'll be looking at are our bylaws, the types of timing constraints when we meet. Currently, we meet at 3:30 on a Thursday afternoon. This time is not terribly accessible for many people in our community. I am fortunate that I am an arts professional, and my, my boss sees the value of me serving on this committee, but not everyone can do that. And so that is one of the things that we will be working through at the committee level, is thinking about ways first and foremost of opening up service on this community to others who, who might not have the ability to do so right now. And the second way that we hope to do that is by increasing this budget. We will have more resources to move outside of the downtown. We have a wonderful partnership with the Iowa City Downtown District, which is its own nonprofit boosterism entity that is separate from the city. And the Downtown District has a fantastic public art director of their own, who now serves at 20 hours a week professionally. We do not have somebody in that capacity at the city to run this program. We have Marcia, who is incredible, but this is not the main part of her job. And so part of securing funding, not only for creating new opportunities for local artists, for calls to artists, but also for administrative staff to make sure that this program can be vibrant and can invest the type of time necessary in forging connections with all parts of our community, is a crucial stage in the strategic plan for us.
Thanks.
One of your goal, I guess, if I'm not mistaken, you said you would like to expand your commissions or?
Yes.
Yeah, I guess to the mayor's point, I really like to see, like, different people serving this committee, because as he said, there is people who used to live in this city. Your art need to feature that, and also how new people used to live here. And to do that, you have to have representative from different communities. So Iowa City is really growing, and we have different people right now. I really like that, that you want to do this. This is really great. Thanks.
Any further discussion?
Oh, I just want to commend you for the strategic plan. I think it's, I mean, I think it's great, and it has so much detail and lots of ideas and the action items. One of the things that struck me was, one, the pictures, just some beautiful photography of various things around the community. But if there's one thing I had to pick out, it's the public art map. Because I think there are an awful lot of items on that map that people have no idea are in this community or where they are. And what's interesting is, is sometimes people talk so much about how we overemphasize downtown, and you look at this map, and there are so many things outside of the downtown, but you have to almost go looking for them. I mean, if, if you don't know they're there, and you don't happen to live in that neighborhood or happen to drive down that particular street, you have no idea they're there. So if, if the public were to look at this for no other reason than to see that public art map, I think it's a, it's a great resource for people to see that and say, hey, I'm going to go out and, and look at some of these, because they're great pieces that we have in the community. So, thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. And we have hopes as part of goal five of the strategic plan to better digitize that art map, maybe integrate it with existing mapping technologies. There are ways to pinpoint historic sites or sites of cultural significance within Google Maps, for example, so existing mapping technologies that are free, open, accessible to the public. So, so if we have more administrative support to do these things, we can expand how this map is able to be accessed, and that's super exciting.
Thank you.
A quick side note, I brought my Kirkwood Community College students on an art safari through Iowa City, and they had 20 minutes to find as much public art as possible. And this was back in the spring, and they found, the winning group found over 100 examples of public art. So we're already doing an incredible job, but this strategic plan is really focused on how we can do that better, how we can serve more people and be more inclusive in our efforts.
Great, very good.
Yeah, and to, to expand the public art, like, outside Iowa City downtown and this area, I guess connected with neighborhood association also would be great, so you can do things on neighborhoods.
Yes, that's wonderful.
You know, one thing I'm interested in exploring is the idea of public art in natural areas, too, that contrast that could be set up between, you know, I'm familiar with Hickory Hill Park, but, you know, having artwork in Hickory Hill Park, of course, it would have to be appropriate for that setting, but I, I think defining, incorporating that would then draw people into natural areas that may not, you know, normally think of them as being a place, a destination for them, but ways we can use public art to activate places that can use the activation would be nice.
Absolutely. My mother-in-law lives in Los Angeles, so not really a comparable city, but the Descanso Gardens, which are a public green space outside of Los Angeles, has a fantastic temporary installation every winter that is light-based, and they contract with light artists, and it's amazing because it allows this landscape to be open at night and experienced in a totally different way. It doesn't detract from the normal flow of their visitorship, and in fact increases that. So we could think about many different applications of public art that is more ephemeral, that has a low environmental impact, that activates these public spaces. And also quickly highlight, one of the grants that we administered this past year through our Public Art Matching Grant Fund was to a project called Ramp, which activated a city parking ramp as a music festival site. This happened on June 9th of this year. The ramp remained open to vehicular traffic. The musicians were located down in the snow pit of the ramp, which is only useful to the ramp during cold months. So those types of site interventions are something that the committee currently is really excited about exploring further.
Interesting.
You mentioned Hickory Hill Park. Well, Bruce and I both live close to Willa Creek, and there is the artwork there. If you have not seen it, and if people have not seen it, because that's a very well-traveled path for, for walking, jogging, and biking, and, and it's beautiful, unusual forms of artwork in the park, and that's, it's really a nice thing. Just wanted to comment on, on your goals, I think. Congratulations on, on writing those. They seem very realistic and achievable and understandable, so it's good, good job.
And I just wanted to briefly comment, too. It's just mega kudos to everyone on the committee. You know, the funding is really going up. It seems like the, the artwork and everything is going in the right direction, and it's really exciting to see what you guys have in store. I think you've done a terrific job. Also do want to give a shout out to Thomas Egren as well. He's done a really great job as well, in addition to all the wonderful committee members, because I know it takes an incredible amount of time to make it happen, so I'm really, I can't wait to see which concerts you have in store.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marcia. No further discussion, roll call please.
Mims?
Yes.
Salee?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Item sixteen, Council Appointments. Applicants must reside in Iowa City and be 18 years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. Sixteen A, Human Rights Commission. We have one vacancy to fill an unexpired term upon appointment. There were 20 applications for that position with a male-gender balance requirement, so seven of the applicants are males. Yeah, I won't need, I won't read their names, but there were seven applicants who were males. Do you folks have recommendations about who to appoint?
I do have one, really. Zachary Rochester. He's a student at the University of Iowa. Just by looking to the people who serve in the current, you know, commission, they, if I just look at their ages rank, the youngest is 26, but the average is really four years old. And yes, bringing students from the university will connect, we always say the university and the city are isolated. This is where gives chance to the student to serve in commission, you know, and I think he's very, he serve in many things that I know, like help, is very good person on, like, community things and helping people in the community.
He was an intern at CWJ, right? And you?
He was, and he was, yeah, I really, he's, he was intern, but he was really working hard on the, on state labor center, I think, on that, but he wasn't like really intern.
Other ideas?
I just wanted to note that I, I actually think there were eight males, because one of them was maybe inadvertently labeled as female.
Who was that?
Van, Van, I can't pronounce it, Van Katesh Janakaran?
Is Van Kanesh?
In, in the application, he said male.
Oh, really?
Am I correct in that or incorrect?
Maybe.
I thought.
I don't know.
I, I saw it's seven.
Yeah, I wrote down seven.
No, because in this list, he's, he's listed.
Well, I don't.
But, but I would agree with Mazzy here. I also was looking at Zachary as, as a very good possibility for this.
Yeah, I'm supportive of Zachary, too. He's one of these guys that I've sort of seen out in the community, and he's just very active, and seemed like he's doing a lot of good things. And I think to Maz's point, bringing those new younger voices is important, too, to balance out the commission, so I think he'd be a great candidate.
There were, I thought there were a number of good candidates, but I would support Zachary.
Good.
Well, it sounds like there's clear support for him. I, I know, I looked at the, the table that shows, I don't know, the various, if you will, ages and characteristics of applicants.
That is very helpful to have.
Yeah, and it seems to be.
Very nice. I love it.
It seems to me that Zachary fills a gap in our current mix of people on the commission, and there, there are other reasons to support him as well, but that's one thing I think about. So I'm fully happy to support him.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Okay, so could I have a motion to appoint, let me make sure I have his name correct here.
Zachary Rochester.
Zachary Rochester to the Human Rights Commission?
Move.
Second.
Moved by Salee, second by Teague. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item seventeen, Announcement of Vacancies New. Again, applicants must reside in Iowa City and be 18 years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. We have one vacancy to fill an unexpired term upon appointment to the Senior Center Commission. Applications must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, December the 10th, 2019. With regard to this, could I have a motion to accept correspondence, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by MEMS, second by Salee. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item eighteen, Announcement of Vacancies Previous. We have one vacancy to fill an unexpired term upon appointment to the Historic Preservation Commission, an at-large position. Applications for that position must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, November the 26th, 2019. We have one vacancy to fill a five-year term on the Board of Adjustment, three vacancies to fill three-year terms on the Climate Action Commission upon appointment, three vacancies to fill three-year terms on the Human Rights Commission, two vacancies to fill four-year terms on the Parks and Recreation Commission, two vacancies to fill a three-year, to fill three-year terms on the Public Art Advisory Commission, and two vacancies to fill three-year terms on the Senior Center Commission. Applications for those positions must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, November the 12th, 2019. We also have one vacancy to fill a five-year term on the Airport Zoning Board of Adjustment, one vacancy to fill a three-year term for the East College Street District of the Historic Preservation Commission, and one vacancy to fill an unexpired term effective upon appointment to the Historic Preservation Commission's Wood Lawn District. Vacancies for those positions will remain open until filled. Item 19, Community Comment. Come on up.
Good evening. Charlotte Lenkitis.
Hi, Charlotte.
Oh, hello. Deputy City Liaison, University of Iowa Student Government. I've got a couple exciting updates for you all. So this past Friday, we had a visit from Regent Barker. He received a tour of campus, which was facilitated by several members of the student government. And yeah, I was there for part of the tour, and I thought it was very successful. He was very receptive to everything that we were talking about. And we are also in the midst of the National First Generation College Celebration, which is from November 3rd to the 8th. And yeah, yesterday on November 3rd, UISG hosted the I'm the First First Gen Summit with the aim to identify and connect first-gen students with resources that can support their student success during their time at Iowa. And there, the celebration is continuing with various events throughout the week. And then the upcoming Transit Study Forums are being promoted through UISG on social media, and they're also being promoted through Canvas, so hopefully we'll get a lot of good student feedback from those forums. And then I emailed you all very late last night about ideas for agenda items for the planned joint meeting with UISG, GPSG, and City Council for Spring 2020. And so I just kind of, I guess, wanted to, you know, put that in your minds, and Austin and I will be creating and sending out a survey, survey, survey to UISG and GPSG members to collect some of student ideas about what they want to talk about. So I don't know if you guys have any ideas right off the bat, or I was going to send you the results from the survey once I receive that, and so then you can kind of gauge kind of what students are interested in and maybe give additional ideas, but, okay, yes, wonderful.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you, Charlotte.
Yep.
Anyone else? No. Oh, could I have a motion to accept correspondence from Charlotte?
So move. Second.
Moved by Teague, second by Suley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 20, City Council Information. Could we start with Bruce and move to the right?
Yes, so we did the Homecoming Parade this year, the University of Iowa Homecoming Parade on the 18th of October, and that was a blast. So thanks to the mayor for suggesting that. It was great to be out there with staff. We also had a vehicle of the cities, there was an electric vehicle, and so we were passing out some candy as well as some climate action pamphlets, just educating the public on some of the goals that we're going to be doing here in the future. So that was super fun. I had a blast, so, yeah.
Me, too.
The next night, on the 19th, our mayor was recognized at the Refugee and Immigrant Recognition Dinner. The event, really, you know, just looking at the refugee and the immigrant, all that they're doing here in our community, it was amazing. It was a great time of celebration, but we also had the honor, and I was able to be present with the mayor along with some more councilors, to say thanks for all that you've done. And so this has been just a great time of celebration for many people, but again, I wanted to just give a shout out to our mayor. This is, you know, today I was, when I came in, I realized that he has four more meetings before he's done here, and so I'm going to give kudos to the mayor, so thanks for all that you do for Iowa City. And human rights awards that happened on the 23rd of October, and there were five, I believe, individuals that were celebrated, all well-deserving. It was a great time of just honoring some pillars within our community that really do serve other people in their, in human right needs. So kudos to all of those that received that on that morning. It was fabulous. Other than that, I have no other updates. I did have one meeting that I went to today, and that was a childcare meeting because we had the childcare summit, and so those are happening, different committees throughout the community. And so I'm looking forward to seeing what is derived as a, as four more carol chair solutions within our community.
I guess Bruce said everything that.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, we're saying like Bruce, we attend, yeah, the Homecoming Parade, it was really nice, I enjoyed it, and also the Refugees Dinner, very nice. But he forgot to say that we, I attend the grand opening for Multi-Generation Center. You know, it was really nice place to, you know, to go, and it is a very big one. I hope, I guess it will solve a lot of, you know, kind of problems that we have for elderly careers. And I like the concept that we have multi-age people will be there, which is great. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And I have to, I couldn't attend the Home and Ride Dinner, but I traveled to Sudan and I attend my brother wedding on the 1st. I just came today at 7 o'clock at Chicago, 11, City Rabbit, and now I'm here, even didn't go home yet. But that's all I have.
Oh, that's seven hours there, seven hours back, no problem.
Yeah, exactly.
Ditto and ditto, but I do want to add a little bit with regards to the Human Rights Breakfast. I think it should be videotaped on Channel 4. Jeff, are those usually shown or not?
I thought we did videotape those, but I could check.
Okay, because I hope you can, because you out there, if you get the chance to watch these speeches, these speeches were so good.
Oh, really?
Normally with speeches, especially maybe if it's me, they go on and on a little bit, but each one of these recipients basically gave like a three to four-minute speech, and almost none of them went over, and almost every single one of them had a very impactful, dynamic presentation that was, you know, inspirational and full of details. Like each one, I wish I would have had like a little notebook to write down some phrases. So it was that good. And so if you get the chance, normally you don't watch those on video, but you should because it was that terrific. The Refugee Dinner, I just continued to be inspired by our refugee community. There was more music, there was more dance, there were even some city councilors that were dancing. It was so much fun. And I'm hoping at some point in the future, gave me the germ of an idea that wouldn't it be awesome to have sort of a refugee music festival? So something to think about, hopefully that will occur in the future. And this past weekend, I was biking along City Park, and I went under the Park Road Bridge, and I discovered for the first time that that underpass under the Park Road Bridge is now done, and that is so cool. So normally you sort of, you go across the road, and it's a little bit dangerous, and we were biking with, you know, my daughter and a good friend of hers, but it was really wonderful to see that done. So if you're a biker or you're a walker, check that out and sort of see that progress that's been made on that bridge. But other than that, that's pretty much it. A lot of good things happening.
Yeah, we went to a lot of events together at St. Patrick's. A few weeks, and they were all wonderful.
I had a quote on.
No policy was discussed, though.
The only one I would add was the Strong Towns Talk, which I had mentioned before the event. But after the event, just wanted to mention that it was recorded by City Channel 4, so I would recommend to anyone who is interested in urban planning to take a look at that video. It was, Chuck Marone has honed his presentation, you know, over the years, and it's worth watching.
Well, for those things that I did with the rest of you, which was some and not some, I won't bother repeat, went to a couple really good events in Witching Hour this weekend. On Friday night at the Englerch, From Impossible to Inevitable, How Climate Action is Mainstreamed Globally. It was a really, really interesting presentation by Marcelo Mena from Chile. And he was one of the top, top members of the Chilean government and working directly with their prime minister or president, I forget her title. And some of the changes that they have made from fossil fuels to huge, huge solar installations, eight new national parks that they have developed and areas they've saved, working very, very closely with the indigenous populations in many of those areas, especially along the ocean and the fishing grounds, et cetera. But they, as a country, they have been very involved internationally with various accords and agreements and changes. And so I don't know if any of that was filmed, but it was an incredibly interesting presentation and just, you know, a lot of the data that we have talked about with the Paris Climate Accord and a lot of other things in addition, but how they have done it at the national level. Obviously, as he said, you know, they're a very different country than we are in terms of the amount of development, human, natural resources, et cetera, but incredible progress that they have made in Chile. So it was a very interesting presentation. And then on Saturday afternoon, at Film Scene in the Chauncey, it was my first visit there, Lynch, A History by David Shields. This is a documentary on.
Marshawn Lynch.
Yeah, I know, I know the name. I'm just trying to stop and think about how to best portray it. I mean, it's Marshawn Lynch, who's an NFL player, retired, but it really was systemic racism, racism in sport, the strength or the importance of silence, how athletes are treated by the media, how black athletes are treated by the media. It was, I think, an 84-minute documentary film, no, there was very little of it that they actually filmed. Most of it was clips from public record, but in order to use those, they can use no more than like 10 or 15 seconds of a clip. So, I mean, this thing was like clip after, I mean, I told him afterwards, I wanted to go back and watch it again because it just was so fast-moving. It went way back. He used a lot of speakers from, that are very, could be considered very controversial today, from Bill Cosby to, I mean, just Bill Russell and all kinds of different people. But it was just a real, a very, a lot of juxtaposition between the clips and the way the film ended was really, really interesting because it showed some black athletes basically confronting the media with the questions that they were asking. And one of them was asking LeBron James a question, and it was just one of these stupid questions that sports writers always ask, like, why do you always ask? It's like, oh, is it important to home court advantage or to protect your own court? And LeBron just looks at the guy and says, well, is it? I mean, it's just, so you looked at how they presented and how the media responded to them, and then they showed clips of Bill Belichick, Belichick, and Papa Doc, that's not right, Popovich, who was with San Antonio Spurs, and how those older white men were treated by the media when they basically did the same thing, like, what kind of stupid question are you asking me? And so the whole thing, like I say, was on systemic racism, racism in sport, the criticism of black athletes for speaking out about injustices, Colin Kaepernick, other people. So if you get a chance, he said you can find it out there on YouTube or whatever, but it's Lynch, A History. And what was also interesting about it was Marshawn Lynch refused to participate in the documentary because he just didn't trust, but he went and saw it, and he told David afterwards, I think he did a great job. And so we were, we were interested in going, but we were especially interested in going because our oldest son, Jeremy, was invited by Andre Perry to actually do a Q and A with David Shields after the film. So it was really good.
Cool.
Very good.
And just a shout out to everybody involved with Witching Hour, just some incredible stuff, so.
Sure. You make it sound like something well worth watching.
It was, very, very well worth watching.
Okay, the Homecoming Parade. I want to praise Zach Berg for all the organizing work he did and the rest of the staff team that really helped with that. I also want to praise Charlotte and Austin for being fellow marchers. It was really great of you to do. So bravo to all. And I want to praise our colleague, Pauline, for being so clever as to buy me a stove hat, stovepipe hat.
That was fun.
That's what's fun, yeah.
Sash, don't forget the sash.
Make a sash. Yeah, so thanks for doing that.
That was awesome.
Yeah, so is that. And with regard to the Immigrant and Refugee Association Dinner at St. Patrick's Church, I want to give, again, a big thanks to Jean-Paul Mugamusi for all his efforts, and Jim Olson for, and the UNA associations for all the organizing work they did, and I'm sure there was a lot more going on behind the scenes that I didn't know anything about. And Father Rudy Juarez at St. Patrick's Church for enabling it to take place out there, as he did with the Sudanese Association event. So I think that that's just a great connection.
Exactly.
So bravo, Father Rudy. Tomorrow, Jeff, unless I'm mistaken, you're going to be speaking at the Sizzle Series Luncheon down at Big Grove about development in Iowa City or whatever. So eyes are going to be watching you. I look forward to it, it'll be fun. And let's see, on the 15th, I'm going to be interviewed on KICI Radio, which is a low-power radio station that's fairly new, about our climate action efforts, and I'll be basing that on what I see next week or whenever it is that we get the report. With regard to the Human Rights Breakfast and the Strong Towns Events, I regret not being able to attend them, but I was in Greenville, South Carolina, attending the annual meeting of my scholarly association, the Association of Collegiate Schools of Planning. And there were lots of great presentations pertaining to inclusion, sustainability, resilience, regenerativity, plus the traditional transportation, housing, economic development, kinds of things. Last, here's a surprise, local elections will take place tomorrow. Please don't forget to vote, both in the school board election and city council election, and this means you, too, Simon. So that's it for me. Jeff?
Oh, me?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, I had a lot to say. You did, you did. How dare you do that? I had a lot to say, too, although a lot of it's been already said, but the last couple weeks was quite the time for recognitions and awards and echo about the Homecoming Parade. What surprised me was a very positive reaction from the crowd of people lining the streets. That was really fun to see that, and thanks again to Zach and his committee for putting all that together with the signs. They were wonderful signs, and the banner we've got now, it's great. Then on Saturday, again, the Refugee and Immigrant Association Recognition Dinner was a fantastic evening with music and singing and great food and dancing. It was, it was a lot of fun. And they did give recognition to the mayor as well as the city itself for what we do to welcome immigrants and refugees to the area. Then on the 22nd, Bruce neglected this, but Maz mentioned this, the ribbon cutting for the Carrying Hands Facility, which is, it uniquely combines the elder care and the childcare. There is no other facility like that in the area, so best wishes and congratulations to Bruce for success in that facility. And then, of course, the Human Rights Breakfast was mentioned. There's always very well-deserving recipients for that, but two stood out for me this year. Of course, with Jesse Case's, Union Brother, who's, I have known him for over 20 years, and he does work very hard for workers' rights and well-deserved on that. And then, of course, I'd have to give a shout out to Angie Jordan because she's just been wonderful with helping to start and lead the Self-District Neighborhood Association, so it was good to see her getting one of those awards. Then on Thursday, the 24th, I attended what was called the Pat Meyer Vision Award Ceremony, which was hosted by the Johnson County Coalition Against Domestic Violence. It's a nonprofit citizens group that is committed to ending domestic violence. Their award is given to both an individual and an organization or a business that has worked towards supporting survivors of domestic violence. And this year, another very longtime friend of mine, good friend of mine, Lois Cox, received an award. She's a longtime professor at the College of Law and has helped victims with the legal aspect of what they need to do. And then also the great organization, the UAY. It just made me realize, in all of these events, made me realize what great community resources we have in Iowa City, just an abundance of them out there and people that are willing to do these things. Then. Then, Friday, the twenty-fifth, my daughter and I attended the Fall Shop Crawl for the Downtown District. And it happened, it was kind of funny because it happened to coincide with Sandra Bernie Sanders' visit on the Ped Ball. So, as we were visiting some of the stores along Dubuque Street, and we had to sort of weave our way through the crowds of people that were there. We couldn't see him. He was off in the distance, but we could hear him and had to avoid getting stickered, Bernie with Sanders stickers, by all the people in the crowd. But that was kind of fun. Then, Sunday, and it apparently went quite well. It didn't conflict with the crawl, and there, I don't think were any events that the police needed to take care of. Then, Sunday, the twenty-seventh, was another very fun event, the Purcell School of Music fundraiser. They called it Bach and Roll. And most of you are probably aware that Doris Purcell founded the school in nineteen seventy-five. It's been around the community for a long time. And in, in those years, it's gained international recognition in the world of music, teaching countless numbers of students and becoming a real jewel for our community. And that evening, they did pay tribute to one of their instructors, who's been the current director there for the past twenty-seven years, twenty, yeah, twenty-seven years, Sonia Zithemal, because she recently received national recognition, the twenty-nineteen National Guild Milestone Award from the National Guild for Community Arts Education, which is apparently a pretty significant award to, to receive. So, I was honored to read a letter from the mayor and the council in the city, as such, acknowledging that award. And so, congratulations to Sonia and to the Purcell School of Music. And then, I wanted to add, I neglected with my CVB report earlier that the University of Iowa rep, there's been a lot of discussion and speculation about what's happening with the student population. And he sort of alluded to the fact that they don't really anticipate a large increase in undergrad students, but they're looking at an increase in graduate students, which kind of makes sense that some of the older folks in the community around are thinking of continuing their education, going back to school. That's all.
Jeff?
Nothing.
Asher?
I'll offer a quick census update. The Federal Bureau has expanded eligible applicants for working as a census taker or as census staff. They initially had required someone to be a US citizen, and they have expanded that to non-citizens with a special focus upon people who specialize in languages or fluent in languages other than English. So, they're working on updating the website to allow people to apply. And we have, I think, on a regular basis, early Sunday afternoons, there's someone at our Iowa City Public Library that is helping people apply on the computer.
You mean, when?
On Sunday afternoons, just about every week. Just about every week, they're there in the library and kind of just when you walk in to the meeting room area, there's somebody there from the census to help people apply.
Great, thanks. Eldor? Kelly? Okay, looks like we're done. Could I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by ma'am, seconded by Selay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned.